Well, good evening, everybody. It is 6:01 and we'll call this meeting to order. I'm Greg Ferris, President of Forney ISD Board of Trustees, and I hereby certify that the quorum is present and the time and manner has been posted according by law. Monthly meetings are open to the public, and although the meetings are open to the public, comments and questions from the public will be contained to the time designated for public comments. At this time, we're going to take item number 12 out of order, and the board will convene into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551074, 551071, 551072. It is now 6:02 PM, and we're dismissed. Well, good evening. It's good to see you all here tonight and glad to have all our visitors. Would you please join me as we stand for invocation led by Chad Johnson?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for our time here tonight. Father, as we undertake the district's business, we just ask that you would grant us wisdom. Father, as we look forward to a new school year, we ask your blessings and your hand of protection would be on our students, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, that you would just bless this new school year as it gets underway. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Join me as we say our pledges.
Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Our pledge alleges to you, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. May be seated. To start off our program this evening, we have some donations we'd like to discuss and have presentations, and we're thankful for each of those. We'll start off with Capturing Kids' Hearts donation, and Stormy Lamont, Chief Learning Development.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Terry. As the largest national showcase school district, we are excited to share that CKH Foundation has selected Forney ISD to receive a grant to continue and support CKH implementation. If accepted, the grant in the amount of $19,100 will be used to equip the district leadership team and the CKH processes with great fidelity across the district. At this time, we're asking the board to consider accepting this donation of $19,000, excuse me, $19,100 from the CKH Foundation.
Thank you. Boards, you've heard this, and it is over our amount, so we do have to have a motion on it. Do I have a motion to accept this donation?
Mr. Ferris, I move that we accept the CKH donation as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burkhalter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you. Moving on to our next donation, our Griffin PTO donation, and Ms. Kristin Zestable, Executive Director of Communications, will present.
Good evening. This evening, we have a $7,800 donation from the Griffin PTO from Boosterthon to the Griffin Elementary campus.
Thank you, Ms. Zestable. Do you have any guests with you tonight on this?
We do have guests here with us this evening. I believe our principal is here along with some of our PTO officers and staff for photo.
Okay. The boards, you've heard this recommendation of this donation. Do I have a motion to accept it?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that we accept the Griffin PTO donation as presented.
Ms. Bateman, do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Amudia? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. If you're here for the photo tonight, those parents and administrators, please come to the floor. Let's give the PTO a big hand. Thank you. Our next donation comes from Fine Arts. Kristin?
So, the Vaughn family made a donation of approximately 250 dance costumes and 150 hair pieces with an approximate value of $7,875 for our curricular dance programs at AFA for both Blackburn and Smith and middle school dance recitals. And they aren't here this evening, but I'd like to present this donation on their behalf for your consideration.
Thank you, board. You've heard this generous donation. Do I have a motion to accept?
President Ferris, I'll make a motion that we accept the donation as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you. We appreciate all these people and their generous donations. Moving on now to 5A, your staff recognitions. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Macca Jones, Director of Visual and Digital Art, to the microphone.
Good evening. Can I make this taller? All right, I'll do this, yes. All right. Okay. So, the TAEA District of Distinction. So, let me explain to you what this thing is. Over 1,200 districts were eligible to apply for this distinction. Brought to you by Texas Art Education Association. There are just 94 districts that actually achieved this honor, and Forney ISD is one of them. The Visual Arts Administrators of Texas Division of TAEA recognizes districts with outstanding leadership in promoting the arts in their district and community. We want to recognize districts that are actively participating members in TAEA and beyond. Your visual arts program met or exceeded a rigorous 14-point rubric. The rubric examines the district's visual art program from participation in TAEA through membership, exhibitions, contests, and community engagement in the visual arts through field experiences, community service, and collaboration with other content areas. We were impressed and proud of your level of participation in the visual art learning experience at all grade levels. When I came onboard as a Director of Visual Arts in Forney ISD, there were several goals that I wanted our district to achieve, and one of them was to become a TAEA District of Distinction. I also knew that the only way we can earn this recognition would be through the collective efforts of our amazing teachers, which you see back over there. This honor is a testament of our core values. We dreamed big. We found our purpose. Collaborated. And did what's right. So, please understand that this distinction is not about the award. It's just a reminder of who we are and what we have always done. Thank you to TAEA for giving us the opportunity to show the rest of the state what we already knew. And please, I would like the Forney ISD visual arts teachers to come up here and join me with this recognition. If you guys can come on up, please.
Thank you all, and congratulations. We appreciate all your work and all your efforts for our students. Moving on then, next to item three there, Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors, the TEPSA Student Leadership Award. Ms. Kristin Zestable, will you give us an explanation and introduction for this one?
Yes, yes. So, we are excited. We have our Griffin Elementary team here this week, or this, tonight, if Ms. Crabtree will come up and bring her team. And they actually received a very special award from the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association. It's the 2324 Student Leadership Award, and Ms. Lauren Burke's fourth-grade leadership team was nominated for this prestigious award that recognizes outstanding pre-K through eighth-grade student leadership teams. And these teams have demonstrated exceptional commitment to their school communities through their leadership and service. So, I believe Ms. Burke is here with several of her fourth graders, or probably fifth graders by now.
Congratulations to you all, and thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate that. So, keep that up and have a great school year. We're moving on here now to our community recognitions. Our next one is our Forney Family Award. Kristin?
It is my privilege this evening to present a Forney Family Award for our, we usually give it to student, staff, or our community members who demonstrate Forney values through an individual act of service to the district campus staff or students. And the group we're honoring this evening has had many acts for students, staff, and our community. And the Forney Legacy Project, started by three of our longtime PTO officers and volunteers, was created to bridge the gap for our families and students in need. They provided startup funds for all of our new campus PTOs as they get started over the last several years, which is increasing parent support at our campuses. And they stepped in to raise and provide funds for our Forney families that have lost homes, lost jobs, faced life-threatening medical diagnoses, and more. They personally impacted my family during my son's cancer journey, so it's an honor to be able to present this to them this evening. I'm honored to present them a Forney Family Award for filling a huge need for our families by standing in the gap during difficult times. Thank you, Forney Legacy Project. And we have Ashley Paulson, Wynona Bear, and Lisa Cowan here with us this evening, who are the three founding members.
Our next item will be reports. The next five items are reports only and require no action by the board. 7A is our semi-annual district update. This time, I'd like to ask Kristin back to the microphone, give her a chance to switch her notes and get prepared.
Forgive me, I'm filling in for Dr. Weber this evening.
Yes.
So, twice a year, we come and share with you an update. We take a little bit of a look back at what we've done this last year and a little bit of a look forward as to what's to come. So, we try to sum up the highlights, the best hits in a video. Of course, it's not everything that we've done or that we're about to do, but some of the big things, just as a reminder of how far we've come this year.
Welcome to a new school year. We're taking a look back at what we've accomplished and a peek into what's to come for the 2024-2025 school year. As always, we are working hard to ensure our projects align with our board goals and district values. The OC opened in grand style with special guests and performance groups coming together for an evening of celebration. The grand festivities opened with all OC businesses offering special incentives for visitors. A special dedication and ribbon cutting for Representative Keefell was held in the OC Theater. The arena was host to a high-energy show produced with fine arts, including over 250 dance and theater students and 350 choir and band students. In addition to our current business partners and student-run businesses that opened last year at the OC, we will open Code Ninjas, Novus Escape Rooms, and Assembly Required during this next school year. Since the grand opening in February, the OC has hosted over 125 separate events, including banquets, internal and external meetings, entertainment, engage classes, sporting events, graduations, and more. These events have brought over 20,000 parents and community members into the OC. We have another 50 events already on the calendar for the remainder of 2024. With our fast growth means the opening of three new campuses this fall. Warren Middle, Teemer Middle, and Wilson Elementary Schools, along with the rededication of Jones Intermediate and the opening of a new stadium at North Forney and a new fieldhouse at Forney High. Forney ISD Athletics welcomed 350-plus junior student athletes from Forney and North Forney High, along with their head coaches and guests, to Sea Life Church for LEED 25 last May. This leadership summit has been a hallmark of our athletics programming, helping prepare next-year senior class for high influence and a success mindset going into their final summer and seasons. From LEED 25, we'll spin off the LEED Council, a group of senior reps from each sport that help drive service projects on their respective campuses, provide valuable input into the direction of the department, and continue to set a high standard in Forney ISD. Our staff, who are certified water safety instructors, served over 1,300 second graders this past school year with the inauguration of our second-grade water safety program. Our dual-credit numbers have increased again for the 2024-2025 school year, with 800-plus students enrolled in both CTE and core courses. We had 33 students complete their associate degree while enrolled at Forney ISD, and 10 students earning professional Level 1 certifications. We had 542 students earn an industry certification this year. Even during the summer months, Forney ISD continued programs to support our community. More than 10,000 meals were provided through Aramark and our summer feeding program. More than 2,000 books were checked out through the district's summer reading program. More than 2,200 students attend STEAM camps. Over 1,000 kids participated at our high schools in summer strength and conditioning, sports skills, and athletic summer camps. More than 175 kids have come to playtime at the OC Junior this summer, too. And hundreds more are participating in our Fine Arts summer programs, such as the Texas Thespian's Regional Junior Festival, Cheer and Dance Mini-Camps, BoCal Majority Camps for band students, and more. Learning never stops. This past year, we honored thousands of deserving students for their accomplishments in athletics, fine arts, CTE, academics, extracurriculars, lifesaving measures, and more. We honored our veterans, Teachers of the Year, and incredible staff as they also garnered national awards. Many Forney Family Awards were also given to our incredible community, nonprofit, and business partners who provide so much for our students, staff, and community. These are just the highlights of our honorees this past year. And we look forward to honoring thousands more in 2024-2025. Thank you to our Forney family for a resoundingly successful voter-approved tax ratification election, or VADER, last November. Thanks to our community, we were able to offer additional staff stipends last year, competitive raises for the 2024-2025 school year, work toward hiring a police officer for every campus, and many new employee benefits. After board approval in the spring of 2024, we quickly got to work to offer all full-time employees, as well as their spouses and legal dependents from the ages of 2 to 26, a free health clinic resource. Yes, free, regardless of insurance. In addition, staff will also have the option for before-and-after-school childcare for the 2024-2025 school year and a teacher classroom supply allotment. For those that do not qualify for free pre-K from the state, Forney ISD is offering a paid pre-K option for our community. This year, we congratulate and celebrate 66 teachers who received designations through the district's fully-approved teacher incentive allotment plan. Teacher designations are either recognized, exemplary, or master, and will be added to their teacher certifications and effective for five years. Forney ISD opted into the program in order to gain over $400,000 additional dollars for our teachers. For the sixth year in a row, Forney ISD is proposing we adopt a lower tax rate for 2024-2025. If board approved, the district has lowered the tax rate by 26 cents over the last six years. We are proud of what we've accomplished last year and are excited to dive into 2024-2025. After launching our rebranded values at the 2024 convocation last week, we are looking forward to what the future holds for Forney ISD and all of our Forney family.
Questions I can answer?
Thank you, Kristin. We appreciate that. Next, 7B is our monthly financial report. Mr. John Chase, Chief Financial Officer.
See if I can get this thing queued up. Such a nice monthly financial report is the operating results for the entire fiscal year. As you know, our fiscal year ends on June 30, and so we're here to give you the results of our final numbers. Now, there's still a few adjustments that we're going to have to make to the books, but this will be a fairly reasonable estimate of what you can expect to receive in our audit report in October. So, starting with the general fund, we had $194.9 million of revenue collected, which is 101% of the amount estimated. You might notice that that's a little bit lower than what was actually reported in your board book. We had actually recorded the state aid on the cash basis up until the fiscal year end, and we're actually going to get overpaid this year, first time in the last several years that I've been here. So, we had to back off a little bit of that revenue, and we'll pick it up as a deferred revenue in our audit report, and it'll just be revenue in the following fiscal year. As far as expenditures, we're at $186.3 million, which is 96% of the amount appropriated. Now, we, our payroll budget, I think we underspent it by about 2%, and then we had some appropriations for supplies and equipment that didn't come in at the end of the fiscal year. So, and that was about another 1%. So, we will reappropriate those. In fact, those are in your board book tonight to approve those budget amendments for that reappropriation for those. But in the end, our unassigned fund balance will be $54 million, which is 2 point, or, excuse me, $3.2 million, or 3.2 months of operating expenses. And that's, you know, it's fairly stout. You know, we're doing really good in the general fund. I feel pretty good where we're at this time. Moving on to food service, our revenue collected was 8.1 million, or 99% of the amount estimated. And our expenditures were 9.5 million, which is 98% of the amount appropriated. And we feel like our fund balance will be at $1.2 million when it's all said and done. That's a reduction of about $1.4 million. As we reported several times during the year, we had some equipment purchases, and we had some retention incentives that we paid out of the food service fund, and we needed to bring the fund balance down because they did not like us having more than three months of operating expenses. And so, that's one of the reasons why we did that. So, anyway, we'll be sitting at about $1.2 million in fund balance at the audit report. And then finally, in debt service, and we've spoken about this one several times, but, you know, we're basically break even in this fund. We had $3.4 million in revenues and $3.3 million of expenditures. Our fund balance at the end of the year will be 57.2, and our August debt service payment will be 31.1, which is what the board's goal is, to have enough in fund balance to cover that August debt service payment that we'll be making in a couple of days, and we've certainly met that goal. And finally, in the cash and investments on hand at the end of June, it totaled $259 million. There's distributed between the general fund, food service, debt service, and capital projects, as you can see there. And that's the finance report. If you'll have any questions, I'll certainly be happy to answer them.
Moving on to quarterly report.
The quarterly investment report, again, at the end of the fiscal year, we had $260.7 million on deposit. 58% of that, or $152 million or so, was on deposit in our construction fund. The other $100 million is split evenly, pretty much, between the general fund and the debt service fund. Our average rate of return during the quarter was 4.1% to 5.4%, depending on whether it was in our depository or in our investment pool. And our total interest earnings for the quarter was $4.1 million. And that's pretty much a good summary of our investment activity for the quarter. If there's any questions, certainly be happy to answer them.
I don't hear any questions from the board. Then the fourth-quarter tax collection report.
And this is the tax collection activity for the entire fiscal year again. We had $116.1 million of current tax collections, and that's 98% of our levy. We had another $1.2 million of taxes from prior years, and that, you know, expresses as a percentage of our current levy, that's 1%. So, the combined collection rate for current and delinquent taxes is 99%. And that's about 1% lower than what we had done on average over the last several years. And the main reason for that is, as you'll recall, we had three special sessions before our tax valuations and the homestead exemptions and things like that were finally approved. And it took the chief appraiser and the tax assessor a little bit of time to get that stuff straightened out. And as a consequence, by the time our levy was set in October, there was about a million dollars' worth of, you know, down reductions in our tax levy through the adjustment process that they go through. So, I mean, when it's all said and done, if you look at what we have actually delinquent as of June 30, it's very comparable to what we had delinquent in most of the other years. It just doesn't look like we collected as much because our levy was a little higher than it actually really ended up being. But that's the tax collection report. If there's any questions, certainly be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. I appreciate it. Moving on to our master planning report, Ms. Kim Morsec.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, board. Before I bring, you can come up, Jeff, but before I turn it over to Jeff from Gallagher, I do want to just kind of remind the board of everything we had going on this summer. It was an insane summer. And some of the projects that we did in addition to our major construction projects, I just want to give you a quick update and kind of talk through, because we had about three or four one-offs in addition to that. So, this is Forney High School. We did two separate major projects at Forney High School. The pack on the left completely got painted, and then all of the hallways at Forney High School got new ceiling tile, new paint, and new floors. So, that's outside the pack on the right. This is just a front shot of the pack, and then that's what the new hallways look like at Forney High School now. So, if you have not seen that, stop by and see it. It looks awesome. The, it looks like one school, you know, we've built that thing over time. So, just really, really looks clean and really nice. In addition to the hallways, we did the entire athletic area as well. So, this is what athletics looks like now. That is the old Varsity locker room. It's now a JV locker room, so it got a refresh. The athletic halls have got painted and new floor. That's right outside the athletic area. So, we also did the locker rooms under the stadium. So, if you'd ever seen those, that's not what they looked like before. So, all the showers got redone, floors got fixed, new ceiling tiles. It just looks really, really nice over there. So, just kind of an update, Seth has been leading that, and he and his guys have worked really hard to get that done over the summer, and it looks really good. Forney High, North Forney High School, they did not have really a secure way to talk to parents without them being able to go into the school. So, we added a new wall at Forney High School and created a secure waiting area. That little window just kind of shows you, it's a better angle of it. The one on the left is, if you're in the waiting area, you can talk to somebody, and then you have to be buzzed into the building. And then the one on the right is showing you what that looks like from the reception area. And then there's a giant conference room right behind that. So, some added safety features at North Forney. Seth's team did that this summer. And then this is Jones. So, we remodeled Jones, but in addition, we painted all of Jones. So, did graphics, painted the whole building, all-new floor, painted every classroom, all-new ceiling tiles. So, complete refresh at Jones as well. So, plus all the construction projects. So, it was a really busy summer. And without... And without Gallagher and Huckabee and all those guys, man, there's no way we'd have gotten any of that done. And the buildings just look awesome. So, we can take a tour if y'all want. Just let me know. Dr. Terry, I can take you around, but it just cleaned up a lot of spaces and did just an awesome job. So, can't thank those guys enough, just for their partnership and their work. So, I'm going to turn this over to Jeff Fisher now to do our normal master planning report. Jeff?
Thank you, Ms. Morsec. President Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, good to be with you as always. This won't take very long, because as you know, it's that time of year, and we're finishing up with a bunch of stuff. So, it should be fairly painless. Start off with the most painful of all of them, and that's North Fornie High School Phase II. And I only say that because I'm sure, as you all remember, back during the spring and early part of the summer, we've got an awful lot of rain, right? And that makes it difficult, made it difficult on all the projects. It made it especially difficult on this one just because of the, you know, the exterior nature of the work, right? The good news is, for us anyway, is that working through the athletic department and with Mr. Weaver, being able to move some things around, the plan on the North Fornie Stadium is to actually have it open and available for subvarsity games starting around the 1st of September, and then it'll be ready for the first varsity game that'll be played there, which I think is October the 4th, and I think that's homecoming also. Yeah, so we plan on having it ready to go for the homecoming game in earnest. But there will be able to be subvarsity games played in the stadium, starting at the end of August 1st of September. Basically, just an update on it. We're working on finishing up the press box, installing the bleachers, as you can see there in the one top picture, working on the site work, sidewalks, landscaping, fencing, those kind of things. It's, for everything really besides the bleachers, the rest of the project is, you know, coming right along, moving well. The bleachers, again, were delayed because of the rain that we had earlier in the year. The Fornie High School fieldhouse, sorry, that you saw in the video. It's basically, the building's complete. Punch list is being worked on, but it is ready to turn over. And then we're working on the exterior site cleanup, sidewalks, landscape, fencing, those kind of things. But that one's definitely finished up, and we'll be ready for the students to come back. And that's going to be a recurring theme, theme really, for the rest of the report. Similarly, at Timmer, working on interior punch lists, getting it ready for the teachers and students to come. And then just working on the exterior, again, because of some of the weather that we had slowed us down on the exterior, but we are finishing up the landscape, fencing, and sidewalks, those kind of things. Pretty much same story, second verse on Warren. It's in the same position as Timmer is, working on interior punch list, completing the exterior landscape, sidewalks, track and field. Ed Wilson, pretty much, that one is done and ready to go. We're working on exterior and interior punch list items, but really, for the most part, that one's done and ready to turn over. Innovation Way is complete, other than the light posts and the streetlights, and they're working on getting those finished up. It should be done pretty soon. Ray, on the fine arts area, they're working on the punch list. And then in the gym itself, they're working on getting the gym floor installed. And then, as with the other ones, working on the exterior landscaping and sidewalks and site cleanup. And then finally, Clay Jones, as Ms. Morsec mentioned, the interior was redone. Some of it was done as part of the actual construction project. Some of it was done as part of the tips project. But really, on that one, we're just working on finishing up the interior and exterior punch lists. It's an exciting time. I would like to say and just reiterate what Ms. Morsec said about our team. Our team's done an amazing job, and that team includes Gallagher folks, obviously, but also Huckabee and also the district. Everybody working together really made it possible for us to push these and get them done at the end. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Sure.
So, I know you mentioned the weather and all of that that kind of went into these projects. So, as a whole, for all these projects we just talked about, then during the adjustments to the aggregate timeline or even the budget as a result of the weather?
Well, aggregate timeline, I'd say the only one that was affected would be the stadium at North Fornie, again, just because of the nature of the exterior work there. But we went into that project early on, you know, knowing that it was going to be a challenge to get it done anyway. And I think that's why when the athletic department was working on the schedule, the football schedule for this year, that they made so many away games at the very first of the year, knowing that we might need that opportunity to finish it up.
Sure.
As far as the budget, no budget issues on any of them.
Any further questions? Jeff, as always, thank you and your team, and Huckabee and everybody that's made this possible. I don't know how y'all do what you do in this short summers that we have. Appreciate all that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. Our next item was public forum. No one signed up to address the board, so we're going to move on here. So, this evening, we have a special guest speaker with us tonight. Representative Keith Bell is here tonight to make a special recognition. Mr. Bell, if you want to step over to the microphone, I will turn the floor over to you.
Well, thank you, President Ferris, Board. Dr. Terry is always a honor to be, oh, right? And I spend a lot of time here, so I really appreciate the word that it takes to do this. Nigga more so with the success that this board has just in its community in the four I. It is a great honor to be your state representative, and the word going to just use the matter of the dollar cap, coin eyes to the coin. But for that, I do have a special recognition for somebody that I really care deeply for. And there's a lot of words here, and I'll read some of these. But the best statement I could make is Dr. Terry is a transformational educational leader. And we hear a lot about these people that have changed the world. I went back to college in 2011, I think, somewhere around there. And I remember having a MS professor that was about 72 years old, retired from the channel. And he said, you know, told us Amazon would put two, just two of those would put two years up there. And right down in the court and distribution. And we're seeing it, and it's incredible to create disruption. It changed the type of impact that has ever happened in any of our lives. And so, remember, as others will remember, it's incredible the job that you have when you have these now pre-kindergarters, pre-k kids coming in here, four years old, three and four years old, and trying to prepare them as educators for a world they're going to walk into 14 years later that doesn't exist the day they walk into your school. That's an incredible job. And unfortunately, and I guess I apologize to the crowd, no matter how hard some of us were, we're not as lucky as they are in making your job any easier. And I'm committed to continue to work for that. And I believe my hair, like yours, President Ferris, has turned a little bit gray, but not while I'm at my time. So, but it's something I found fascinating about. So, if you'll bear with me, I want to review a resolution from State Department. Whereas Dr. Terry, the Fornie School District, the bank, was 2024 Superintendent of the Year by the recent Education Association. And whereas this esteemed educator first joined Fornie ISD more than a decade ago, in their tenure as Deputy Superintendent of the Department of Brain-Based Learning Model and Health and Student Energy Program, expanded computer access, since taking that over the district in 2018, the Democratic Marshall Energy Initiative. Under leadership, the district had passed a large coal mine and copper and fuel activity watch, which led to cost saving and improved facility. Fornie ISD also owned an opportunity central, a multi-purpose campus for students and community members. And whereas the steps that advocates for public education have stayed up, Dr. Terry has collaborated with education, career departments, makers, and teachers, and administrative officials across the state of Earth. Moreover, is a member of teacher readiness, task force, industry base, and certification committee and a slated committee on the Last Go School Coalition. 2021, the name of the Superintendent of Watch on National School Public Instruction Association. And whereas Dr. Terry, a bachelor degree from Expecs, a bachelor of American College, a student of Massachusetts, a Harvard, a doctorate of Texas, a university college. He began his career in public education in 2001. Worked in the Course County, Millbridge, and Brooklyn Elementary School District. 2006, he became Associate Principal of the House School and the Committee of Names of Social Security. He went on to become a principal, earned a teacher high and lobby ISD director from academic and career connection. And whereas though his own work in education, 2003, stood beside, Justin Perry fled away and walked towards the town of the educational environment, and he is truly deserving of this first prestigious honor. Now, therefore, being a law, Dr. Justin Perry is being congratulated on this election as the 2024 Superintendent of the Year by the recent Education Association. That he is being presented to the Spirit of Special Wisdom, the continued test. And that's my, my, and your state representative. Dr. Terry, I've been on that floor as high as three parents, and I appreciate in this community, whenever I'm established, and that's the fact, innovators, innovating, open-minded, really try to change. The educational policies for all five, four, six, the size of 14,000 of the radical ones. And so, board, I commend you for running an educational leader. I won't take very much credit for that. I appreciate your leadership, your ability to be kind of a mediator, a project, and board, all the leadership and your support in the way of the backs of the bonds, the tax, right of the case, and what, and those are, you can think of it, you put yourself at risk in the way that you're doing, anytime you make those kind of decisions. Most important to the man, anybody that prepares, and you deal with the community and the emergency. And there's nothing more important than kids and the quality of their education. Their achievement, the size of their performance. Thanks again, Dr. Terry. It's an honor to do this and present this to you, this is what you did, what you want to do, whatever. And I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you as an educator. More so, I appreciate you, and you've been great. But either you're talking about friend and mentor to me, and I will love that work with you and for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell, for taking time tonight, and keep up the fight. Moving on, next will be our consent agenda. 9A approved the minutes from June 24th. 9B approved the budget amendment. 9C approved the T-test. 9D approved the innovative courses. 9E ratified TVCC MOU. 9F approved the 24-25 student code of conduct. 9G approved the 24-25 extracurricular code of conduct. 9H approved expedited waiver. 9I approved a public information request. 9J approved the resolution to join PACE. 9K approved the frontline purchase. 9L approved vehicle purchases. 9M approved the purchase and adoption of McGraw-Hill Science Curriculum. 9N, Tasby Update 123 as a second and final reading. 9O approved the purchase of Securely. And 9P approved the easement rights for the Talte Special Utility District. Board, you've heard these. We can take them individually or collectively. Do I have a motion from the board?
I make a motion that the board approved the consent agenda collectively as presented.
Have a motion from Dr. Adam Mudea. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burkhalter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any here now. So moved. Moving on to item 10, consideration and possible approval of early childhood literacy goals. This time, I think, Ms. Leslie Rader is our presenter. She'll make your way up to the microphone, please.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Terry, School Board, and thank you for this opportunity. And hard to believe it's been five years since we started down this journey. And so, I just want to give you a bit of an update before we reset these goals for the next five years. So, our overarching goal is still focusing on students reading on grade level by third grade. We will put progress measures in place from pre-K all the way through second grade so that we can track that project, that progress. But I want to share with you again some pieces that we've implemented over the last five years that we are seeing have impacted our data at this point. So, in 2021, we knew that the Texas Reading Academies were coming, and we wanted to get ahead of that with our teachers. And so, we developed, of course, our own version. We had a Fornie ISD Reading Academy that all pre-K through 4th grade teachers attended. The following two years, we did implement Texas-based reading academies here in Fornie. We have curriculum coordinators that run that programming and professional development. So, we have seen 350-plus teachers, administrators, learning specialists go through this specialized training so that they can implement those strategies in their classroom. This year, we anticipate roughly 85 teachers will go through this program. They come here, they learn those skills, and then they receive coaching on their progress in their classroom as well. We also implemented a scripted curriculum in pre-K through 4th grade. This is just to ensure that we have equity across our classrooms and that every teak is covered for all of our students. The curriculum coordinators also worked hard to ensure that our FISD, future-ready curriculum is aligned to their reading assessments. Prior to this implementation, we were double-testing students. Our teachers had a hard time connecting the assessments with their day-to-day instruction. So, we've assured that there is alignment in those areas moving forward. Also, want to point out, our goals that were set five years ago, there were some changes that happened at the state level while we were trying to reach those goals that we set. So, prior to 2021, the 3rd grade reading test was a reading test. It was comprehension-only and roughly 34 questions. In 2022, we saw the introduction of STAR 2.0. And so, that's where TEA embedded a writing test along with the reading test at the same time that they changed the question types. So, it's no longer a basic multiple-choice test. We have six different test types. Students in 3rd grade are now required to write a long essay that was hand-graded last year. And then this year, we saw the introduction of AI grading into their STAR assessment, which really caused a variance in our scoring that we had not seen in the past. And students in 3rd grade also have to answer short response questions by typing those into their computer. And then they have passages where they are tasked with revise and edit-type prompts. And so, you can see that in the last two years, the goal that we were striving to attain, the measure has really changed in what that looks like. And so, wanted to make that clear before we moved into resetting the goals for the next five years. So, at 3rd grade, the state expectation is that you are at 60% reading on grade level. And that means the students, 60% of the students are scoring within the meets range on that reading test. And that means the students, sixty percent of the students are scoring within the meets range on that reading test. And so our goal is to move from forty-eight gradually up to that sixty by 2029. And then we have progress measures in each grade level along the way. So in second grade, we would like to be at sixty-five percent on reading level. We're currently at forty-two, and so we know we really need to utilize those skills that we've been learning in our training to continue to grow our students. In first grade, we used to look at a specific skill in this grade level. And for these new goals, we have changed it to look at their overall reading level. So how many first graders can accurately and fluently read a passage and also show that they have comprehended what they have read? And so we're really looking at a wider range of skills than just a targeted phonics skill that we had in the past. For our kindergarten progress measure, we would like to see eighty percent of our kindergarten students on reading level. They only move through four levels at that grade, and we hope that with a solid foundation, we can help them continue in the right direction. In pre-K, we do not actually assess a student's overall reading level. We do look at individual skills. And so we were able to identify the top four phonological awareness skills that would really show us that a student was ready to move into kindergarten and learn how to read. And so in pre-K, we will be looking at their phonological awareness and reporting out students' progress in those skill areas.
Dr. Terry, do you have any further comments?
No, thank you, Ms. Rader, for presenting this tonight. Just as she said, you know, these are implemented back in HB3. Was the expectation to begin to have early literacy goals as well as the next item, which would be the college career military readiness goal. And a lot happened in that five-year timeframe, obviously. So we're excited to be able to reset those and hopefully a little bit more stable systems so that we can continue to grow our kids. So we would recommend tonight approval of those five-year goals as presented.
You've heard the recommendation and Dr. Terry's comments as well. Do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the early childhood literacy goals as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any here or not? Thank you, Ms. Rader. Next item, number 11, consideration and possible approval of college career and military readiness goals. Our presenter is Tina Spain.
All right, good evening, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, and School Board. Thank you so much for allowing me to fill in tonight for Mrs. Pierce while she is out sick. I am Tina Spain, coordinator, excuse me, Director of Guidance and Supports.
Thank you.
All right. I'm here to present our CCMR goals for Fornie ISD. The Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board set a strategic plan in place with the overarching goal being that at least sixty percent of Texans ages twenty-five to thirty-four will earn a certificate or degree. By 2029, we will have already exceeded the state average. We will continue to incorporate industry certification test prep curriculum. We will require all CTE teachers to take the same certification their students will take. We will provide quarterly PD for CT teachers. And we will collaborate with our learning team to embed TSI, SAT, prep, and English III and Algebra II. Our plan for this school year includes every student in a practicum-level course is required to take an industry-based certification. To gain two periods of early release or late arrival, a student must be CCMR-ready. English III students will take TSI English. Algebra II students will take TSI Math. Provide TSI testing opportunities for seniors. And enroll students that are not CCMR-ready in college prep, math, and English. Our CCMR board goal is that we will increase our overall district CCMR score from ninety-five percent to one-hundred percent by 2029. The three progress measures that we will use along the way will be: One, the percent of students who meet the CCMR threshold for college readiness will increase to eighty-five percent by 2029. Students can reach readiness through exams such as ACT, SAT, TSI, dual-credit, or college prep courses. The percent of students who meet the CCMR threshold for career readiness will increase by forty percent by 2029. This is progress measure two. Students can reach career readiness through a certification aligned to their CTE program of study. And our progress measure three, the percent of students who meet the CCMR threshold for military readiness will increase to eight percent by 2029. As a reminder, the military readiness indicator just began to factor into accountability again for the twenty-two, twenty-three graduates. We will continue to support these program measures by adding additional CTE certification offerings, support in preparation for college readiness exams, adding additional courses that align to our associate degree plan through Dallas College, and providing students additional access to military branches and ASFAB preparation. We are excited about the opportunities that CCMR provides our kids. That is the end of our presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Spain. Do you have any questions from the board? Dr. Terry, any comments?
Just a few. We're excited to say again that Texas has got a sixty-by-thirty goal they put in place years ago. And, you know, we're excited to say Fornie's gonna exceed that. And we will hopefully continue to be the model for college career military readiness as we move forward. Thank you again to Tina for filling in tonight for Robin. So we'd recommend approval of this five-year plan and these five-year goals as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the college career and military readiness plan as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Burkhalter, do I have a second?
Second.
Do all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none, so moved. Next item on the agenda is closed session, which we took that earlier out of order. And moving on then to item 13, consideration and possible approval, ratification, employment, or professional contract personnel. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the ratification of performance of professional contract personnel as discussed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item 14, consideration and possible action regarding the pursuant of sanctions for educator abandonment of contract. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the board find that no good cause existed for Jennifer Ann Brown and Riley Vaught to abandon their contracts with Fornie ISD and authorize the superintendent to take necessary action to report the employees to SPECTEA for review.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item 15, consider and take possible action regarding pending accountability lawsuit. Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I move to authorize the superintendent to engage the law firm of Old Manland Demerit for purposes of participating in further legal action regarding the accountability system.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burkhalter, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. And then number 16, consideration and possible action regarding semi-annual superintendent's evaluation. There'll be no action taken tonight on that one. Then item 17, announcements, Dr. Terry, I'll turn this over to you for all intention to anything in particular.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, we have a full fall already, so hang on tight. School does start here in a few weeks, don't forget. August 14th is a Wednesday. We've had some success with that on traffic and things in the past, so we're gonna continue that trend. A couple of things I would like to point out, we do have some dedications and rededications. First Thursday, September the 5th is a Wilson Elementary School dedication, so mark your calendars for that. Thursday, September the 12th is a Teemer Middle School dedication at 6:00 PM. And then Jones Intermediate School on Tuesday, September the 24th is a rededication of the former Warren Middle School, and I can't wait for you guys to see the transformation there. And then we also have Thursday, October the 3rd is the new Warren Middle School dedication. So lots of ribbons to cut, lots of construction projects to close. Again, thank you to Huckabee and Gallagher for all of their work and our team internally. It has been a busy summer, but well worth it. So we can't wait to open these schools for these kids. So, Mr. Ferris, I will turn the rest of it over to you unless there are any questions about the announcements.
I hear no questions. We do appreciate everybody's effort getting this year kicked off. It's gonna be another exciting year, and thank you for being here tonight. This meeting will be adjourned, it's 8:04 PM.